Now it is. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board Agenda. Why is it so loud tonight?
It's an echo.
No one else is here.
That's what it is. There's no buffering. Yeah. It is. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting for April 10, 2023. Open disclosure, this meeting is being recorded, also being broadcast via Zoom. Call the meeting to order with a roll call. Sherri Quirk?
Here.
Mike Baptiste?
Here.
Jane Gleason?
Here.
Sam Corbett?
Here.
Carl Schultz?
Here.
And the Chair, Michael King. We are here. We have a full board. Preliminary business approval of meeting minutes. I don't know if everybody got a chance to read them. We can start off with the meeting minutes of Monday, May 20. Oh, you didn't bring yours with you? That's not like you. Your bike's not on. We're being yelled at.
Each packet is one hole for each person.
Oh.
We must have a lot of money in the budget, man. Look all this paper.
I know. I never would have printed mine if I had known. So we will start with Monday, May 23, 2022. I don't think I found any typos in this one.
We have, by the way, we have a new recorder.
The recorder's great. It was just, the typos we found were very, very minute. I blamed you.
Yeah, why not?
Hey, Michael, I got a question right off the top.
Sure.
How can you be here twice?
How can I be here twice?
Yeah.
Because I'm amazing.
Yeah, I was just asking if that's what works.
Small typos. Maybe I was here once in body and once in spirit.
It's gonna be entertaining evening.
Has everybody had a chance to review the meeting minutes of Monday, May 23, 2022?
So moved.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Sam Corbett. We have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Unanimous six zero zero. Meeting minutes for Monday, June 13, 2022. I found one very small typo.
Never mind. I'll bring this question up later.
Okay. Page four. One, two, three, four paragraphs down. Basically, they just put residential heat pump in residential heat pump twice. So we just need to strike it one time and call it a life. Other than that, I didn't see. I didn't catch anything else. Carl, you want to do?
I think you've got a couple more words to take out. I think we need to take out the words. Heat pump in the residential heat pump in the...
That's what I have. I bracketed that whole thing. So basically, it should say the ability to install heat pumps in the adjacent property.
Or in the residential adjacent property?
Well, it doesn't. Then you'd have to take heat pump in the...
Okay. All right. So in the residential heat pump, in the residential heat pump, in the...
So I had a general question about all the minutes. I'm very thrilled that references to the documents are being included in the footnotes. My question is that each of these references, documents that couldn't be found, what do we do about that? So, and the only one that really caught my eye was the Fearing Hill, the timber.
I saw that, yeah.
The timber. So we need to go back and probably make sure they're part of the record somewhere.
I still would like to make a point that we should have every one of the iterations of the bylaw available in a folder or file or something on the website.
They are all on the website.
But I also think that each each time a project comes in, the applicable one should go in the file for that project.
Absolutely. We should confirm what bylaws we're looking at. Now, for the solar projects, we generally do that. All the solar projects that were, that are before us now are the October 2019 version. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
But that version should go into the file for the project.
I'm not arguing that. That's fine. That's...
Mark this current bylaw or how other...
Or applicable bylaw.
Yep.
And you mean on the, on the, on the website in the project folder?
Mm-hmm.
That's okay. I do that as well personally.
I kind of don't care that it takes up a lot of space. It's just digital.
No, no, I support your, I support you.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you're not supporting it.
It's a good idea.
That would maybe help some of the citizens in town.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and maybe Jonathan, you could work with Matthew to come up with some kind of naming convention that has, make sure, like at the top of the list, you know, like a couple of hidden characters or something that's...
Put a, put a zero in the front of it. That'll put it at the top of the list. Zero dash applicable bylaw.
Great.
And then say what the bylaw is.
I second Ms. Gleason's motion.
And I didn't realize that that conversation was
Good enough.
was on the agenda. I thought we were approving minutes.
We are.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I got excited.
I noticed that.
You promised you'd be quick tonight.
Did anybody else find typos aside from that one paragraph? Take the silence as no?
I did not.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 13, 2022.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, looks like you guys are doing the yeoman's work tonight. We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Six zero zero. The meeting minutes of Thursday, July 7, 2022. I did not find any typographic errors in this one either.
Is there, did you skip one, Mike? June 27?
I have... Oh, do you want to do them in order?
Oh.
I was just trying to mix things up a little bit. We could do them in order if you want.
No, it's, it's up to you. You're the Chair.
June 27. We'll do that just for Sherri. Must be the, the counselor in you. So the meeting minutes of Monday, June 27, 2022. My, my previous statement applies to this one as well. I didn't find any errors in this one. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Six zero zero. Make sure I get my dates right.
July 7 is next.
The meeting minutes of July 7, 2022. I did not find any anything that caught my attention on this one as well. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Six zero zero. Meeting minutes of July 11, 2022. I did find a couple typos. Page four. One, two, three, four, five paragraphs down. Mr. Fletcher previously before the board stated he removed 8,200 yards of material from the property. I'm pretty sure we all know that's wrong. That was, the statements in the testimony were 80 to 100,000 yards. So we just need to modify that.
Where was that?
Page four.
So it was, has moved 82,000? Yeah, it's right here.
Right there.
Oh, 8,200. Okay. So we're changing that to 80 to 100,000?
Correct. And then on page six, similar error in the amount of products removed from the site. Second paragraph down. Reads, B. Cosgrove further stated it was clear more than 80,000 to 10,000 cubic yards. Should be 80,000 to 100,000. Other than that, I didn't see anything else. With those, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the noted corrections.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Six zero zero. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Before we leave this topic?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the Planning Board request the Planning Office to file a copy of the relevant bylaws in the project folder for each of the projects that come before us going forward. So that
So that's part of the record.
So that it's part of the record and come up with some kind of naming convention to ensure they sort to the top.
To the very top. Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Preliminary business, item number two, Shell Point Place, street name application. 69 Great Neck, map 41, Lot 1019. Is everybody here to talk to that? I see that they, there was a letter attached to it from the Assessor's office. Did, do we, should we have EMS weigh in on that before we...
Excuse me, I saw an EMS letter.
You did? I didn't see that.
I didn't, you, I got one from assessors.
Yeah, and that's all I saw.
You also had one, I thought, from EMS. That was the one where you got confused about the 12th versus the...
Yep.
That was from EMS, I believe. I have a, I have a file copy here. That's the assessor's comment. Hang on. Apparently, I didn't file it correctly.
Say, I, I don't remember seeing it, but...
I read it before I came. Go back and find an email from Jonathan.
From Jackie?
No, it was from Jonathan, I thought. And I remember the EMS, it was the June 12th one, and I thought the letter was from EMS.
He stated that the, the title was wrong, or the attachment, and it was, the attachment was, my email was not working appropriately. So when I attached it, I kept attaching the same one, and that was the last one I had from them, that I recall. And then the next one that came in was from assessors.
All right. I thought, I thought, I apologize if I'm wrong. I misread it then.
I, I don't know. I would think that EMS should really be the one to weigh in on whether the, the name is appropriate, just to err on the side, side of safety.
Probably want police and 911 to respond as well, too.
Right. So do we request a letter from both EMS and the Police Department that they don't indicate any confusion with this name?
If appropriate, yes.
That would be my suggestion.
Absolutely.
And I don't think there's any huge time crunch on this project because I drive by it every morning on my way to the gym, and there's nothing going on over there. It hasn't been for weeks. All it is, is a bunch of sand. So it's not like there's houses waiting for an EMS visit. So I don't know. Anybody else want to comment or...
I agree with you.
So I would entertain a motion to... So, I mean, do we, do we deny it and ask them to resubmit with the missing?
No, you just wait for the response from...
So we just continue our decision until we get a response?
Yeah, right.
All right.
You don't act on it now. Just...
Okay. So the Planning Office, the Planning Office will reach out to the applicant and, and inform him that, that he needs to get weigh in from both EMS and the Police Department on the name? Or is it something that the Planning Office is going to do on his behalf?
I think the Planning Office does that on his behalf. We know it's for sure.
Okay. All right. So I would move that we do not act on this until there's confirmation from both EMS and the Police Department that the proposed street name of Ben's Way will not cause any confusions as far as emergency response goes.
Second. Okay.
Can I, can I do a motion? I don't have to entertain it, right? I can make it myself?
Not by reverse order, no.
All right. I guess I need, so I need you to make that motion, Sam.
So moved. Do it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Oop, aye.
And Chair votes aye. Six zero zero. Report town meeting by Planning Board. This one suspiciously sounds like you.
Well, typically, what we have to do is we have the zoning bylaw before the, before town meeting article for the zoning bylaw. The state, state law says we have to make a report to town meeting. And it's, it's just written up, and I think you missed the last one because you didn't show it to the town meeting, but it's something the Chairman would normally do.
Mm-hmm.
And you note that we had a public hearing on the articles and heard them and made a recommendation to town meeting.
That's what this one is.
Yeah, that's what that one is. That one's a little bit longer than you have to read. You don't have to read the whole thing.
Think they'll be throwing tomatoes at me by the time I'm done with this.
That's right. You want to read something that's shorter and just has the middle paragraph there with the date of the public hearing and that the Planning Board made a recommendation.
Okay. So do we need to read this whole thing into the record or we just have to vote on...
You would hand that into the town moderator and just...
Just as this is what we're going to present at town meeting?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe there's an article missing from the summary. On March 27th, we approved a change to the Spark Parking Space Regulation for Section 921, and it's not mentioned in the summary.
Right, because it missed the deadline on the filing with, for the warrant.
Okay.
The segment, the segment didn't put it in the warrant.
So we need to make sure we bring that forward for the next meeting.
Yeah, don't lose track of it.
Okay.
Don't lose track of it.
Right.
So we'll, we'll be watching it for the fall meeting.
Yeah. If you, if you remember, that's the one the Planning Board brought, excuse me, the zoning board brought for we changed the parking spaces two to five.
Yep, for the, for the repair shops.
For the repair shops, yeah.
And we missed the deadline on that?
Well, the segment went ahead without including it in the warrant.
So zoning is going to be mad at them, not us, right?
Right.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Thank you.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yep.
The dimensional requirements by law, the one that Jane worked on?
Article six, yeah.
Has that gone through the proper, just out of an abundance of caution, has that gone through the proper notice process so that it's ready to go to town meeting?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
Although there is a variance in, as I found, I discovered. It's on the last table, Table 628, which is the table with, has the FAR in it. And, and Jane's version, she had modified that to be building coverage.
And, and actually, the reasoning that I gave you earlier was quick. What did I do? And I, I think it was just really an oversight, and then it was just cut and paste from the other tables, and there's no FAR that shows up anywhere else in the bylaw, in this section that I found.
That's correct. There's no other...
So I think it just came from the other tables in here that it just went right to building coverage, and it was percentages, so I just kept going, and I just, I think I just missed it. And it should be FAR.
Well, it should be FAR, but I got a visit from Bill Lockwood today, and he's in the audience because of this, that the difference between FAR and building coverage is that building coverage is just how much area is taken up on the...
On the lot.
It's a single...
On the lot. And it could be multi-stories high above that, that coverage.
Mm-hmm.
FAR is the
Entire.
the square, entire square footage of the building in comparison with the lot area.
Right.
So...
You don't build a skyscraper?
Yeah, you can't build a, the 25% is, is going to be 25%, is going to be what?
25% at 20 stories.
All right.
Yeah. No, I, I totally understand that. Of course I know that. But, yeah, I think I was probably just taking the table, the other tables, and just, and I saw it was a percentage, and I just kept going.
So to our, to our email from earlier, we can present the correction on the floor?
The idea is which correction you want to do. Bill Lockwood would like us to do the FAR, remove the FAR.
And keep it as, as building coverage?
Well, you have building coverage already.
Right, which, keep it the way it's in here.
You want to come to it?
This is the table that appears in the handout, and it was pointed out to me by one of my clients, embarrassingly.
If you could introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects. I was advised by one of my clients who, whose project is in peril or in
This effect.
harm's way anyway, that the FAR might be changed during this town meeting. And I, so I pulled up the town meeting handout, and lo and behold, no FAR to be found.
Yeah.
And in fact, that is the same condition that was presented to town meeting in the fall. The handout had no FAR in...
Did it go to the, I thought it did not, I was not there, so I thought it did not...
It didn't go, it didn't go to town meeting, but it went through the process up to that, so it was handout.
You know, the handout that they're presenting at the door
Yeah, yep.
did not include FAR.
Yep.
FAR has been troublesome since its inception for architects like myself.
Yep.
It actually kind of came in through the back door because you inserted a definition of the FAR in advance of actually having any requirements which the FAR applied to. And then it has a significant effect in onset where I do a good, good portion of work. And other, and obviously, it only applies to small lots, but I have yet to find the client that comes through my door and says, please, could we make this cottage smaller? They always want to increase it. And so that, that throws us into the Board of Appeals, I think, far more often than is necessary. But, so I, I'm looking for clarification here where, because I need to, I've got five projects on, on the boards. We don't use boards anymore exactly, but we, I've got five projects that are in design right now that are affected by this decision.
So if I may, if FAR goes away, does it make these projects easier for you and your clients?
Oh, for sure. It makes, makes them allow, that allows them to be larger.
Is it a detriment to the environment in which the cottage exists currently?
I shouldn't...
I.e., I have a semi-decent view of the water, and the cottage in front of me is about to be 35 feet tall?
Well, I...
Just a question. I'm not judging.
That height is a different question. You, you redefined height.
But you're, aren't you looking for some clarification as to how many square feet you can build?
Well, that's, that's what the, the combination of the FAR, the building coverage, and all of those factor into the soup, and you try to derive a building out of the other side.
Educate me.
I think this will not be the... One more point that I'll make first. You're, you're currently promoting the village in Wareham Village, where you're actually talking about increased density, and you're probably talking about FARs of five and six as opposed to .25. If you're actually going to accomplish, if, get anybody to bite on developing those properties the way you're promoting in other ways. So that, kind of, kind of that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah. So do you understand the difference between building coverage and FAR?
Well, I, I do understand building coverage to be if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot and it's 25%, then you can cover 2,500 square feet.
Right. Now, an FAR would include calculation of all floors.
Okay.
So if you have a limitation on, if you've got this site and you want to build according to an FAR, you could build something really small and build multiple stories, or you could build something bigger and build fewer stories. So the FAR dictates total square footage, and it's calculated against the square footage of the lot as a percentage.
So this, the situation that we're dealing with, it was in place
Right.
and your rewrite and cleanup just utterly omitted it.
Missed it. Yeah, missed it. I'm, 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 in looking back at this a little more carefully and spending a little more time getting my head back into it, I'm sure that I took this list from the other tables and just cut and pasted it because it's, we're trying to do this in the name of consistency.
Right.
And I'm sure that those words, building coverage, made it in there, and I saw max by percentage because I knew those numbers were percentages, and I thought, oh, that's right. Because nowhere else in the, in the bylaw or in this article does FAR show up. It shows up, it showed up here.
Strictly there.
So...
So your, your work, I just want to make sure, because Jane put a truckload of work into this, I just want to make sure I understand.
I know how much work goes into that.
Yeah. So your work in rewriting this article for clarification and consistency purposes had zero to do with modifying the FAR?
Had no, no intent of changing the content, and I've, I think I've been sort of saying that all along, that there's, there's no intent to change the content.
Okay, so...
At this time.
Except what was presented at public hearing is the wording that's in that document.
Yeah, that, right. There was, there was one instance where there were two numbers, and I took the one that was the latest, I think, was what happened, and that was the only discrepancy. So this is, this is really, I think, a Scrivener's error.
I was going to say, so the question that I asked Ken earlier today on this subject was, is this something that we can present as a Scrivener's error at town meeting with a handout that has the FAR back in place? Not changing anything, it was just, it was just omitted.
You don't want to put FAR, and you want to take FAR out, right?
No, FAR is what would, would be in, what should be in there according to this idea that we're not... that we're not changing content. I mean, we're not debating.
Now I'm lost, what?
Whether it's appropriate or not.
I'm not, I'm trying to figure, what are we changing it to?
It should be FAR here, in the new, because it's FAR.
But that's not what you want, is that correct?
It's not what he wants, but I think.
I'm trying to understand the argument.
No, it is not what I want, but that, that, I'm here to present the ambiguity, so that I can get the clarity, so I can go forward.
And I, I don't, I'm not saying that I think that that, the content change should not be discussed, but I think that that, that we're not there yet. This is not the forum, we're trying to just clean up the consistent information.
So if I'm playing it back so that I understand, if, to follow your intent of making no changes other than making it more readable, it should say FAR.
Correct.
So we're not introducing that, which, which I thought Mr. Lockwood said it was a change that we were introducing, that's not what we're, we're not introducing.
We're not intending to make a change there, and there was, and it was not, it was not discussed as a change at the hearings, it got, it got missed.
Today it says FAR in the, if I go look in the bylaws today.
Yeah, and here it says FAR, right, yeah.
I'm, I'm back with.
We'll back.
Well, I understand what we're doing.
What happened, yeah, and how we, how we got here, and what the intent is.
So just to clarify, we can present this as a, as a Scrivener's error at town meeting with a handout showing what it's supposed to say?
What we'll do is, the report to town meeting will be to hand out the, we'll make an amendment on the, on the floor of town meeting.
Yep.
And we'll hand the copy to the town moderator and read it off as, as, hopefully we don't have to read through the whole article again, we can just note that difference in the.
One column was just omitted by error, no changes have been made, it's just, should have been there and isn't.
It's not even a column that's missing, it's just mislabeled.
No, it's a column that's missing.
No, because the, these percentages under building coverage are the, the numbers that are in here as FAR.
Okay, then where are the cover, where are the numbers for building coverage?
I don't believe there were any.
Does that revert to the primary table?
It goes back to the zoning district.
It's not here, it says category lots, front setback, side setback, rear setback, FAR, on table six twenty-eight, the first one, and same on the second one, there's no reference to building coverage, so it's just that this, and the percentages listed match what's here in the building coverage.
So it's just a description error?
It's just, these two words, building coverage, should be changed to FAR.
Okay, right, because.
And that would be consistent with this.
Because the building coverage is already in the, in the primary table.
Yep, yes, yeah, there's no reference to building coverage in this six twenty-eight.
No, but it is in six twenty-four.
Yeah, so it gets covered there, right.
Yeah, okay.
So, and, and I will reiterate, it is not my intent to make your life difficult, it's just the intent here is to just clean up the language and the format.
I'm not taking offense, or I'm, I just want to know which direction I should be headed from here, here before.
Yep. Unfortunately, it wasn't the direction you were hoping for.
Yeah.
Well, life, life doesn't always go the way I'd like it.
I hear that.
Okay.
So, all right, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you for your attention this evening.
All right, and we appreciate you coming by.
Okay.
And so that's the plan we'll take down.
So you'll make a motion on the, on the floor of town meeting for an amended article?
Correct. So do we need a motion to make a motion?
If, if you want to do that, yeah, that makes sense.
Will it make you happy?
It would.
As long as you're happy, if you're happy, I'm happy.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to make a, to make a motion on the floor of town meeting to address the Scrivener's error for Article Six, with the intent not to change the dimensional information, but just to correct the description to FAR, which is what it should read.
I'm moved.
Do I have a second? Did I say that clear enough? Got a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk, all in favor, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thanks again.
So this is another work item for the, for the fall, right?
Yeah, this would be something you could take up again, as one of the items that you want to discuss.
On these items, Jonathan, that we're mentioning, that are going to be carried or worked on for the fall, can we put some sort of a, just a tick, tick system in place to bring it back up, so that it's not a, an eleventh hour, oh my god, this, this coming fall? You know, maybe we'll start it on at the end of the summer, or something like that. Preliminary business, item four, for discussion and vote, this shouldn't say reappoint, this should say appoint.
I liked reappoint, I was willing to go with that.
I will be the first to admit that I did an absolute dismal job with Serp Head this year.
By the way, you're not the only one in the, in the towns around here that.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I, compared to the year before, I did a really, really bad job. So I would, since I can't make a motion, I'm going to look to Sam. I would like entertain a motion to appoint Sherri Quirk, if she is willing, to be the planning board's Serp Head representative for the coming year.
So moved. Second.
I knew she wouldn't second. Sherri, are you okay with this?
I am okay with this.
Okay, good.
You know who's involved?
That'll keep you busy.
I think Sherri would be perfect, to be honest with you. Let's wave a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in, can Sherri vote? Sherri can vote.
I, I will recuse myself.
Okay.
From dishonor.
All right, Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Oop, aye.
And the chair has an enthusiastic.
I was voluntold I was doing this, so.
You were voluntold. It's usually the way it works, so.
Good luck.
I was curious why you wanted to stay on it.
Why, I wanted to stay on it?
But reappoint.
Whoever put reappoint was.
You wanted to redeem yourself?
Yeah, no.
No.
Preliminary business, item number five, discussion, discussion for design guidelines for downtown.
Let me start off, I'll.
Should I?
Jane and I have been talking about the design guidelines, and what we decided was we should get a focus group together and present the design guidelines, and see what the response was to the downtown, the design guidelines, which as you know are an important aspect of the character and the quality of development we're going to get in the downtown, and how we go about getting that after we, if we adopt the zoning, that we're looking for a town meeting to approve.
I got a question, because this confuses me a little bit, not that it's difficult. We've, we've had several community outreach meetings on, like, the whole concept already, do you think you're going to gain more information past that?
I think so, yeah, I'll go, I, I still have the, the presentation I did to the group on Thursday, if you want me to go over that again with you?
No, I mean, I've, I've, I've seen two of the presentations already, so I'm.
Well, this is on design guidelines, though, and design review, not on the redevelopment plan.
Okay, all right. Kyle wanted to stay here till at least eight, so I guess we'll get a little bit of time? Or was it nine? I mean, I'm interested, I mean, it's a pretty big project, I'd kind of like to see it, if it's different from what I've seen already.
Yeah, it is, it is about the, about the meaning and implementation and so on of having design guidelines, it's not about Wareham Village redevelopment one specifically.
So Ken's the IT master, so we might be here till eight o'clock after all. I saw you out on Main Street staring at the buildings across the, the way, so I figured you were redesigning Main Street in your head this afternoon.
I don't think I'm jumping the gun here, but I think that the general consensus reaction to the design guidelines that have been put together in the proposed article is that they would like to put together more specific guidelines, there was agreement that having something in place immediately if the, if the zoning changes, the overlay district is going to happen, that having something is better than having nothing, but they would, everybody seemed to think that they would like to get much more specific, and I would say that that is a very Herculean task, to, to put those together, and it's, it's all about building consensus, that you've got agreement about what it is you're trying to achieve, and that's not the easiest thing to do, so furthermore, there may be, there's a possibility that once the, you get into that conversation, that they realize that maybe vague is better, there's still that possibility, but anyway.
Just before Mr. Buckland starts, just a question, what, and I, we may have discussed this back when we talked about the, the public meeting, what is the town's risk, or the planning board's risk, that we approve, and hopefully we approve this at town meeting, but we move forward without having design standards in place, what kind of challenge is that going to create for us?
So there are some, there are some design guidelines that come as part of this thing that's going before town meeting, but they are, they're vague, and, and that's where it's difficult for a designer to understand what you're trying to get at, and, but for that matter, I think it's difficult for us to say what we're trying to get at necessarily. There's going to be a lot of reaction, I think, and actually, I was saying that there's a bit of a catch-22, because you need the strong guidelines in place at the beginning when you don't have the information yet, and you'll develop good, strong guidelines, but then it'll be.
So what, what, what do we do when we get an application before this happens? It's, it's vague enough that we can, we can set conditions?
We're hoping, we're hoping that we, we get people who are willing to work with us through coming up with something that, you know.
During, as part of the design review before it even becomes special permit or site plan review.
Right, so I, I think that, that part of, I mean, my suggestion during that meeting is that we put together a design review committee, and that was one of the big questions, was how are they appointed, who appoints them, who's, under whose auspices are they, are they an autonomous group, anything like that, so we've got to, we've got to figure that out first, but I think that there should be a group that does design guideline review, and that would, at the beginning, I think, be focused very much on putting together the guidelines.
Okay.
And then, and, and their, their other task would be to review, review projects that come before the town, and, you know, the balance between those two things might shift eventually.
But they, they wouldn't become a special permit or a site plan review authority?
No, no, but they, they would just.
Like an advisory?
Well, no, but, but we, we've been talking about having design review before it even gets to site plan review or special permit, that would be a function of this, of this.
I think you want to have them work together, because this, the design review is going to have some, some site design issues that are taken up in that process.
It would be nice.
And that's going to be, want to be part of the site plan review as well.
Yeah, but it'd be nice if we had a concept prior to the, the, the site plan review begin.
Yeah, so I, I think that's actually something that this committee, and, under whomever's auspices this is, figures out that sequence and.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, one, one thing to, to think about here is, Carl and I have just been through a process of trying to establish an alternative energy committee.
Yep.
And the, the thought was, is it under the select board, is it under the planning board? Some of the feedback that we got during that time was that if it's under the planning board, really only planning board members can be on it.
Right, and that was, that was one of the things that got discussed, so there, we were looking at a handful of.
I'm sorry, there's.
Sorry.
There was also feedback from Rich Bowen about limitations that there might be on such a committee, not being properly a committee of another town committee, so there, there may be some issues here to work carefully through, and, and I would imagine also that this committee, or whatever you guys decide, working group maybe, whatever you decide to do, you will preserve the authority of the planning board to, you know, make whatever decision the planning board thinks is appropriate, and, and, so, little worry for me, and forgive me, I'm not remembering right at this moment whether the projects downtown go through site plan review or special permit.
I believe it said special permit in the, in the WVR one.
It's definitely a special permit to do that, that added height.
But it's a site plan review for the.
Yeah.
Just site plan review.
Yeah, and then a special permit to do, to get the height, the height bonus.
Yeah, so it's a little, little, I guess, two concerns there, one is, I think our authority with site plan review is, is more limited, and would be helpful for me to understand if in that process it would be possible for either, either this committee preliminarily, or the planning board secondarily, to say no to something, or to say, no, you can't do that, we would prefer you did this.
Yeah.
Or whether that will subject us to some kind of court review, and then ironically, but at the same time, you know, I'm worried that the planning board could get involved in a lot of discussions about design review that, that would be better addressed earlier on by, by experts on this subject.
Right, and, and to that point, one of the things, and, and we're working with the planning office, with the Article fourteen, fifteen rewrite, we're trying to clarify the application and review process, and one of the things we've discussed, although haven't finalized, and it will come up in our workshop, is defining a design review process in the bylaw, or at least describing it, but we've discussed it, we haven't decided on what that is, so we don't want to get out of whack with the Article fifteen rewrite with what you're trying to do, we need to make sure we, we are harmonious.
It's, it's an evolving process, and that's one of the reasons why we decided to put the design guidelines in the rules and regulations, because it, it can change over time, and I always use the example of what happened in, in Falmouth, when I started there as a town planner, we had an insurance agent who, who had started to just review the, the design of the different projects and comment in a letter form, and that eventually evolved into a small committee sitting down and reviewing the, the plans, and since they had good ideas and actually were helpful in the, in the design review, it became a more formalized process, and eventually town meeting voted to create a design review committee, and with the design review guidelines that they would use to review projects, so it was, it was something that didn't happen right away as, in that form, but it evolved as people understood and appreciated the, the effect of the, the design review, because we still don't have necessarily a, a common, a common goal for a design review at this process at this time. If you want, I'll just run through these.
I just, I want to put one thing out there, that this is all sort of in, in reaction to an apparent appetite for design review, I'm not, I'm not pushing this, I, I'm not saying we need design review, just so, I just wanted to be out there, that this is something that, there seems to be a group of people who are interested in seeing this happen, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'm also not necessarily championing the idea, but I think that if, if that's what the, the citizenry would like to see happen, then we need to do it thoughtfully.
Well, like, you're asking, especially with the downtown project, you're, you're asking for, well, we are, as a town, are asking for huge changes down there, so the thoughtfulness of how it's going to look once it's built is, I would think is pretty important.
Yeah, well, it's, it's also very difficult to put together a, a good set of, of design guidelines that are constructive.
And the interesting thing about it is that it's a negotiation, and, you know, you can negotiate with a project that has more value, where there's. And, you know, you can negotiate with a project that has more value, where there's more marketable rental space in, in the, in the project. It's easier to...
To ask for a little bit more?
Yeah. To ask for changes or whatever else that comes along with it, because there's so, so much value in the ultimate product that it's created.
I think this process will probably get easier once the first shot is fired. Once that first building goes up, or is at least reviewed and possibly built, then I think the whole design thing will, will kind of take on a life of its own.
There's only going to be, there's only going to be about one or two projects that come out with the, with the zoning the way it is now anyway. It's going to take a, a lot more of, of putting together parcels to make a larger sized parcel or air rights over Merchant's Way to create the kind of project that makes sense in the market the way it is now.
Mm-hmm.
And to put it out of the floodplain as well, too.
And in an ideal world, that first project that comes through is, is brought forward by a proponent who is cooperative.
Yeah.
Right. And that's what we expect. We expect to come up with a developer's agreement, maybe to work it out as well.
What if they're not?
That's a difficult situation.
Yeah.
So what I did, why don't I run through these slides real quick and...
All right. So I have a question at the end then.
This is what we discussed, and we can, after this, we can talk about what was, I think, talk about what the results of the comments that we got from people at the, at the session. I just used this as a series of questions on design review. Talked about design review as a process that improves the quality of sites and structures in terms of compatibility with community-based design criteria. And this is all to benefit the public realm. And the public realm is the, the things you see from the street, from the, the public, where, where the public walks and is allowed what they actually see, so it doesn't include private spaces. It can be administered by an independent or a, a defined committee. It looks at architecture as well as the landscape and public spaces. It occurs during the building, the permitting process. And one of the things about the design review is you can look at, you can list the items, the elements that you look at in the, in the building design that you consider. Because what you're doing is, with zoning, you create the box that you put the building in. You have the side yard setbacks, the height, the front and rear yard setbacks. So you create a, an envelope in which a building could be constructed. Well, with design review, you're reaching into that, that envelope, and you're starting to play around with the, the elements of the building itself, and the windows and the doors and the awnings, whatever else that comes along with there. One of the things that you don't do, though, is you don't try to design the project with this. It's very important that you're not, and that's, that's part of the problem when you have more detailed design guidelines. You're, you're attempting to design the project, and that doesn't always work. That, that rarely works. As a matter of fact, it just makes the project more expensive, and the possibility of gaining something in there less, less clear that you'll get something that you want. And it's not, it doesn't attempt to regulate the use, but it's just the design. So it's compatible with what the community wants to see. And it's, it's to develop that dialogue in the, in the permitting so that you get improvements to the project. It started as historic preservation. That's really where the design review was born. And it may, it could regulate elements of the building and things like the street wall and lighting and signage and pedestrian scale. It can look at public amenities, the open spaces, the plazas, and the use of street furniture and amenities you want to have to create public spaces. And you can include bonuses, such as a higher floor area ratio. Here we go, floor area ratio again. If they create some usable open spaces. It can use to prohibit something that's so different that it doesn't conform to the surrounding projects. Or it can be something that prevents something that's too similar, where you have a, a consistent, too consistent of flow of, of design elements. The questions you can ask in the regulations are things like, what are the distinctive characteristics of the neighborhood or district or area? And you can ask for a checklist of, or an analysis of the, of the district to determine how people define the character of that area. Do they look at the, at the, at the low walls of, of brick in, in front of the storefronts there and think of that as an element that makes the village, the village itself? What are, what are different elements of the, of the development that you can consider? What are you willing to accept in terms of degree of change as well, too? How you want to have, diversify the, the character of development? We don't necessarily want to have derelict buildings to be our character. We want to have something that's improved. And it becomes important as to the, how it complements the historic contents, context as well. And this is not to be applied townwide. This is something that, is something that you look for within the district and the, and the character of that district itself. You want, you want to not have vague or ambiguous language. One of the reasons why is that something like New England character doesn't give the designer that much direction if you're going to say you don't like it because it's not New England character. If you're just using that as, as a subjective standard, then you can have something that maybe is, is less clear as a guideline or, or something that is a clear criteria. But you, you may want to, you may want to have words like "may" to give a choice, a suggestion rather than an obligation for design elements to be included. We had two drafts that were floating around on this. One was the public amenities and the, and the public realm. And it required the inclusion of public amenities and listed the priorities, which were public access to the waterfront, active uses on Main Street, landscaping and street furniture on Main Street and the waterfront, and special standards for increase in height. There were additional performance standards for dark sky lighting compliance and enclosure of utilities and waste disposal. That means that the dumpsters were enclosed. The other alternative that was floated after we went to rules and regulations was something that focused on the context. And this is the idea that you're comparing the nearby buildings and open spaces with the specific elements of design of the buildings. And I think nine elements were included: height proportions, relation to surrounding spaces, shape, landscape, scale, directional expression, architecture and site details and signs. The performance standards are the same. So in, in this case, what we have is, is one, one that talks about what is our most important factors. And in this case, it was the public access to the waterfront and open spaces. And the other was the, the design elements of the building and how that would be negotiated in the, in the, in the process of design review. The standards for height increase were that generally a building standard of three to five stories was to be encouraged, because this creates a sense of place, because there's enough mass there to identify it as a, a town center. Pushing back the upper stories of the building so they're not visible from the street would reduce the height of somebody walking down the street, on the sidewalk. They wouldn't see the upper stories. There would be references made to the height of elements of adjacent buildings so that there was some compatibility. But that there wasn't necessarily a designer to have consistent height of buildings, that there be a variation in the, in the heights of buildings along, along the street front. And that large, large discrepancies or differences would be, would not be accepted. And the canyon effect of buildings looming over the street would be considered inappropriate to the, to the design concept as well. So those were the, the design standards that were included in there. When we went through this, the, we didn't get necessarily an opinion as to whether or not the, the context of the buildings or the public realm and open space was the preferred direction in the design guidelines. But we did get a little bit of a concern that we have design guidelines in place before the, we get a development project coming in, into the, into town.
And that they'd like to see more specificity.
Yeah. They like the idea of, of images being used in the design guidelines to be included. But I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah.
And not, not, not as, as clear that, that that's the helpful direction to take at this time.
It's a difficult direction to take and get it right.
Right.
So is, is your thought that in light of the, the timing and the, the need to have something in place by the time town meeting acts on the new redevelopment zone, that it's more feasible to set up this committee and maybe more practical and effective for the town than it is to, to think out in detail what design guidelines might be?
Well, I think that this, the group needs to, I think that the group ought to be charged with, with putting together guidelines and working on the guidelines, which I think is going to be a work in progress.
Mm-hmm.
Through the course of their, of the life of the guidelines, that a lot of what happens in guidelines is a reaction to things that have come before a town. And that's how you develop them. It's over time. Things that, that have not been well received or have been well received. So we're in a tough situation here right now, I think, because there's a real desire to get this bylaw passed. But I'm, I'm worried that we've not got a design review committee. We've got design guidelines attached to this zoning change through the rules and regulations, but they don't really have a lot of teeth.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and looking at it from the, from the other side of the table, they, they don't have a lot of information in them to guide somebody who might be putting together a proposal. So, yeah, it's a, it's a tough situation. I don't, I don't know what I would recommend at this point, because there's this, this desire to push forward with the zoning. But I think that the design guidelines are important. And I think that there is a desire among the people that I've talked to to have some good, good, solid design guidelines in place. So...
Do you think with, with the design guidelines that are, that you think could be ready in time, would that, and given the overall law under which we operate, would the planning board be able to, to condition, properly condition a project so that something that people found objectionable, whatever that is? Let's not even try to define that.
Yeah, right, right.
Would this planning board have the ability to condition it and have those conditions stick? And maybe this is even more of a question for you, Ken.
I, I think it could. I think you have the, the ability to negotiate and, and approve with the conditions that create the kind of character of development that you want out of it. The question is, what kind of character do you want is the, is the real issue? And I think that's what Jane is getting to.
I think that's where your problem lies.
Yeah.
Is, you know, you're talking about putting together a group of people to, to address the guidelines. Well, who are these people? What are their qualifications? And what keeps their personal preference from creeping into the process?
And what's the final goal?
You can get ten different people.
To be part of zoning?
That's where I think that...
Well, go ahead, no, finish. Go, go, go. Go ahead. I was going to go, I'll follow up with you.
The end result, do you want that to be part of the zoning law? I mean, you have, you have this group, they get together, they finally come up with recommendations. Do you envision that becoming a bylaw? Or do you want a committee to review every project?
So the discussion has been around having a group that, that reviews every project for this redevelopment district.
So can I, go, go ahead, finish. I'm sorry.
Which means that there won't necessarily be a lot of projects coming down the pike. And the, right now, the design guidelines have gone into the rules and regulations of the planning board instead of into the bylaw. So they are recommendations. And they would go, then go to the, come to the planning board as recommendations. And I don't, at the, at this time, I don't see them becoming part of the bylaw because I think the bylaw can tend to be a little more static.
Yeah.
And I think that these need to be a little bit more...
Yeah, they get to be nimble.
Nimble. Yeah, that's good. Yes. Dynamic and nimble.
Good.
So to follow on, on that discussion, though, if they are rules and regulations, then the planning board has to vote to adopt them. They have to be discussed in, in open meeting. Excuse me. They have to be discussed in open meeting. And then the planning board has to vote to adopt them. And then those would be the guidelines that we use when either looking at a site plan review or, they would not, I don't know how by law they would be incumbent on this committee. The only, they become incumbent on the planning board and whatever process we use. I mean, they would, certainly the, the committee could inspirate and, and, and follow them and use that. But I think the process of law, as I understand it, is it would have to, the only way to enforce it is if it's part of a condition of a site plan review or a condition of a special permit.
Well, that's where I personally don't know the, the legal ramifications...
Well, that's, that...
All that well. And that's where somebody else is going to have to help. But I, I think that this could be...
Well, that's why I'm saying it out loud and hoping that we get confirmation.
Well, and I imagine that this could be an advisory group to the planning board, this design review committee. And maybe it's an offshoot of the planning board? I don't, I don't know.
I, I don't see any legal standing for an offshoot of the planning board under, under general law.
If it's, if it's an advisory group to the planning board, that, I, I don't know how that works. I honestly don't know.
Well, that's why, that's what we're discussing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not dictating how it works.
Yeah.
And I'm only saying out loud what my understanding is, and we would need clarification and guidance.
Yep.
But one of the things we're struggling with, with rewriting Article 15 is how these processes actually work together. And design review or pre-application design, design review is, everything I'm saying now is my, my... is my, my understanding.
Yeah.
I'm not making, that design review is discussed in mass general law as, as a, a concept. I believe that it's mentioned in there, but don't hold me to that. Site plan review is accepted under mass general law but not talked about in the law specifically. I'm looking at Sherri constantly to keep me.
Yeah, I, I am not disagreeing with anything you said.
Okay. So one of, one of the, one of the things that I'm learning as we go through this process is up until we get the special permit, we have limited mandate, control to mandate. For example, you cannot deny a site plan, a site plan presented for site plan review. You can condition it, but it, it's not like we take a vote to approve or deny.
I'm sorry, if I could just interject.
Please keep me honest.
And your, your conditions cannot be in fact a denial.
Right. You can't, you can't condition it out of existence.
Right.
And it can't be arbitrary and capricious. So if we don't have the right to do a site special permit, we have limited ability to, to deny a project, excuse me, to deny a use in a district where it's approved.
Right.
In fact, we have no ability to deny it without special permit. And Tricia has a question, if you want to take questions. But so that's why I'm trying to, one, I'm trying to be really clear that I understand how all this works so that when Sherri and I try and rewrite Article 15, first, and I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to keep this meeting long. But when we try and apply all the stuff that's going on with solar to this complex issue of design review, site plan review, and special permit, it gets even more complicated because the state is taking more and more authority away from towns to do stuff.
A sort of, a little bit of an aside, Ken actually brought up something in his slideshow that I don't know that everybody was sort of making note of. And that is that the design guidelines really originated, that the concept of having design guidelines originated with historic districts.
Historic, I caught that, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that therein, there is some precedent for, so that's what they can wrap their, their hands around is precedent, historic precedent. Which when you're doing design guidelines, not historic design guidelines, it's a little bit more subjective, so it makes it even that much more difficult to do.
Okay, anyway, I'm, I'm fully supportive of where we're going. I just want to make sure I understand how we're gonna actually accomplish it.
I, I don't, I, I don't know either. And.
You don't think that the, the best course would be just an advisory group?
I do think an advisory group would be good. And I think the advisory group can have kind of two charges. And one is to work on the design guidelines and two is to maybe affect some, some design reviews of projects that come before this board. I just don't know what it would be made up of.
But I hearken back to Sherri's caution to you.
Yeah.
Is an advisory board that has any more than two members of the planning board can't be appointed by the planning board.
But why would you even involve the planning board?
Because all of this has to go through the planning board in terms of.
Site plan review.
Site, or, excuse me, the rules and regs.
Rules and regs.
Right.
And that's where it starts.
But if, if an advisory group gathers and we are conscious of who is on, not that we appoint them.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying it has to go through. I'm just saying if it doesn't, if it includes more, then, then it can't be us. Then some other board is gonna appoint them, the select board. And then how we work together to avoid conflict or.
Or open meeting law issues.
Or open meeting law issues or.
Well, what, what's rattling around in my head is, is an advisory group of not a big number of people, because you get too many opinions, you, you don't get anywhere.
That's, that's a process issue, yes, I agree.
So you get, for argument's sake, you get four people, five people, whatever. And they have a variety of backgrounds, maybe somebody from the historical committee, somebody from an architectural firm, somebody from an engineering firm. And collectively, they gather the information from the town that says, all right, this is what we would like to see in building design. And then they come to us with their findings. And at that point, we decide what we would want to vote on to, to enact into rules and regs. But couldn't we approach, not, not necessarily have them look at every single project.
No, no.
But have them give us the, that broad stroke of what it is they feel the town is.
One of the things, one of the things you could do is, is set up the application form and, and format that, in the rules and regulations. And then you hand that to whatever advisory committee you want to create to provide you with a review of that material.
And my only, I, everything you described and, and what Ken says I, I agree with is the process. My concern is, and, and is advisory appointed by the select board. And then they come to us and we second guess them. That, that becomes a, a fractious or contentious or a, a source of conflict.
Well, I think at that point, we would, we would be conscious of taking their recommendations, applying them to the, the rules and regs that we're living by now and determine what we can actually control. And, you know, it'd be nice for them to come and say, we'd like to see a church steeple on every building. But it's not realistic. And that's the conversation that you have.
Okay, I, I'm just, just thinking about the process. But yeah, we're not, we're a long way from that. I'm just trying to think of how the process would work.
I think that's one, part of it is, and that's a discovery that you have to find is how, how it works in this town and how it would best work for the board. And as a matter of fact, the Falmouth process is no longer in, in, in that format that, that, that.
Evolved.
Yeah, it's evolved since then as well, too. And, and they don't have their, their review committee isn't active, is not active at this time, I understand.
Well, in town here, you had a design review process that failed, right? Or it didn't, it didn't work as well as, maybe it was before you took over. But I understood that historically, we tried it.
Well, there was an attempt to do a, a general townwide design review process and that ran into political problems.
A buzzsaw?
Yeah.
Which, which is sort of informing my, my thought process.
Well, you know, I think one, one thing that, that we could think about is, just as in our Article 15 regulations, as they are and as they are hopefully to be rewritten to be even more clear about this, you could have, well, the select board could appoint a committee whose job it is strictly for downtown to do design review. It could do design review and report its findings to the planning board. It could conduct themselves with minutes and with, you know, a proper process. And we would get a record from them as we get recommendations from other town boards. And it would, I think greatly simplify what this planning board is doing and be, I think, consistent with, with how, at least I've seen the, the town do business in other areas. That's, that would be one approach. The, I think the, the hurdle that you're pointing out, Jane, is that we don't have a whole lot of time to figure out.
Yeah.
What we're doing.
Yep.
So whatever we do, we should do it, you know, with, with some sense of urgency.
Well, are we, are we attempting to get this accomplished before this is voted on at town meeting?
That's not possible.
I, I don't see that happening.
That's not possible.
So do we run the risk of presenting it at town meeting, having it voted in, and then having to grapple with an unwanted project coming before us before we get to fall town meeting? Or do we, at the risk of committing political suicide, push this off until town, fall town meeting?
Well, I think.
That's the conundrum.
Well, I think we're, we're stuck to, to having to wait till fall town meeting for, excuse me, no. If I understand the process correctly, I was gonna say we don't, we're not stuck with waiting. I think if this, if this package passes at spring town meeting, one of the early actions that the planning board needs to take is to hold a public hearing on the current.
Design standards.
Rules and regs or design standards very quickly without necessarily even getting into a lot of debate. We have time to study them, but get them on the books.
Get them into place.
So we could get them into place pretty quickly so we have something, right? We would get them into place as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And then, once they're part of the rules and regulations, the process for modifying them doesn't rely on town meeting.
Right.
Right.
It relies on open meeting and a process that we.
We control.
We control.
Yeah.
That's exactly why that was, that, that was decided.
And by the way, my further understanding is if the select board doesn't ever, or takes their time or struggles with, I'm trying to find the right word, it takes them a long time to get this committee formed, that does not stop this group or any other citizens' group for making recommenda, incremental improvements to those rules and regulations as, as, until we, I mean, that's always can happen, but until we get a board or a committee in place, right?
I have a procedural question. Is there a reason why we could not put those in place in the rules and regulations prior to?
No, there's, I don't think there's any reason not to, except we don't have.
So if they don't apply to anything, then they're just moot. But.
There's nothing, I don't think there's anything that keeps us from doing that, other than the need to post a public hearing.
Yeah.
And hold the public hearing.
And we can get that done before town meeting?
No, we don't have any more meetings before, before town meeting.
Yeah, the, the danger is that somebody comes to us with a.
With a project.
With a project, and we have nothing.
Stops it, like, just like the, the.
But, but if you want to begin, we don't have to wait for town meeting to vote. We could work with Ken to post a public meeting for our first meeting after town meeting, which is May 8th, I believe, right?
That's right, you do that. I don't think you're gonna run the risk of anybody coming forward with a project in the meantime.
Well, and, and further, doesn't, does the AG have to review this even if it passes town meeting?
Yes, right.
Yeah, that's right.
So they're not gonna review it immediately.
But, but the.
Ninety days, probably, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We're still, we're still waiting for our solar bylaw. Tricia keeps waving her hand.
I thought she was waving at me.
Oh.
I was saying you were all handsome and beautiful, that's it.
It's not gonna work, Trish.
Nope.
So we're gonna put it on the 8th? What's, we, we have a workshop on the 8th to follow up with.
Article 14 and 15.
Or was it, was it alternative energy?
I, I got noted Article 14 and 15.
Oh, you're right, it is, it's the list of action we're gonna talk about tomorrow, but we have to get in front of them for Article 14, 15, yeah.
Okay, can I do a couple of comments?
Only after you identify yourself, ma'am.
Oh, my name is Patricia Ann Worts. I am participating right now as speaking as a citizen, not a select board member. Regarding your committee to put together, to work together, I thought Ken pulled together a really great group to sit in and listen to his presentation. You probably, we probably could get a committee out of that group or a subset of that group. There were a couple of things mentioned in that meeting, and that was, I think Jonathan said he'd go after the model that Falmouth is working and the model that, that Born is working. I think we can pull in and use that as a base guideline. My biggest concern is if we start, if planning board or whoever starts approving some plans, once you prove it, approve it for one, then you risk the chance of others saying, well, I want the same thing, and why can't you approve it for me? And we have a situation in the town with the conservation committee where a lot of that has happened over the years, and they are the largest group. They get the most lawsuits filed against them. So we don't want to create something and go a little bit early and maybe approve some things, have the planning board approve some things that they don't necessarily want to be the model going forward. Because you can run the risk of, well, you said it was okay for this company, but why not for me?
I would, I would ask the question, I don't know if anybody can answer it here. What happens when the law changes or the rules and regulations change? How does that affect precedent for approving something?
It doesn't. They become pre-existing, non-conforming.
No, no, but if, if someone says, if someone comes with another project and say, well, you said he could have sliding glass doors, and now your rules say I can't.
That, that happens all the time.
It's a change in rules. They're subject to whatever rule is effective.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I, yeah, okay.
So that kind of takes that concern away.
That's why the rules have to go through open meeting and, that's why they have to be public hearing and the rules are not changed arbitrarily or in secret.
Well, I think that's actually what I was referring to when I said that the, the rules and regulations for design guidelines are probably gonna develop pretty significantly based on reaction to things that we see.
I think they'll be evolving all the time.
Mm-hmm, I would think so, too. It's just like the, the ZBA coming before us about the number of parking spaces at a, at a mechanic shop.
So you've got this little space down here that we're talking about. There's not a whole lot of room for things to migrate to what they actually want to be that will work best for that area. If you're talking about design for the whole town, that's a very different thing.
Yep.
So that's, that's my one concern is that there will be pushback. You allow that company to do this, you're not allowing me. And, and so I think the, the design committee is a really good idea. I think, Ken, the folks that you pulled together, I mean, you could probably pull five people out of that group that would make a great design guide team or committee if they're willing to do it. But that, again, I just want to make sure we're not set up to where the town is facing more lawsuits because we did something for one group, one company that we didn't do for others.
So, Mr. Chair, if just, if I could just, just respond to the, one of the things that we have to deal with is, once we get an application, we, we're, we're time bound to respond. So we can't, we can't tell an applicant, no, we're not done with the design review or the design guidelines, hold off on your application. So we have to rule on that application at, at the time it's made, with the zoning laws that they're subject to, with the rules and regulations that are in place at that time. So we can't really avoid the problem of things changing over time. And we, I don't, so the, but the thing that we need to do is when we make decisions, we need to, to clearly articulate how we came to that decision. And I think the, the recommendation that Jane made earlier is if we put in the project folder either a copy of the bylaws at the time or, or a note that says, these are the bylaws that, that apply, and here's a link to them, whether they're a copy. By the way, we could do the same thing with rules and regulations.
Absolutely. If there, if there are gonna be things in there that, yeah, there are things in there that are applicable, that we should do the same thing.
Right, I mean, it's so, Sherri has a question, so that, that, my, my thought is, is that the way, the only way a, a board can move forward is do the best they can with understanding the law as it stands at the time the application is made. And you have to clearly articulate and document your decision. Now, I'm not gonna comment on the challenges that Conservation Commission is having. And the courts will, will provide feedback on their process and that, that we can all learn from. So that's, that's the only, but we, it's just nothing we can do to avoid that. Which is why we, I think as a board, we spend an awful lot of time deliberating so that we understand the application and what we're ruling on. Now, the, the thing that we can get better on is documenting our decisions. Although, and that's gonna be a challenge, I think, for us on some of the coming decisions for us as a board. And that's, we just have to get, do the best we can. And as long as we're not arbitrary and capricious, and as long as we articulate how we came to our conclusion, even if we lose, we're not, there's no malfeasance. We, we're open. even if we lose, we're not, there's no malfeasance, we, we're open, we're clear how we got to our decision. If the court says, you made a mistake, we made a mistake. I, I, that's just my opinion, I don't know.
So, just one, one note sort of emerging from the middle of what you said, I think there, there may be language we could put in the rules and regulations that would apply subsequently enacted rules and regulations to pending cases, or, or words to that effect. So, we could try to remedy whatever it is we were not able to get right, for whatever reason, in, in subsequent rules and regulations, that's probably something worth doing. And I mean, it sounds to me like, Ken, your group needs to do its very best to put together the best design guidelines you can, that can be adopted at, at an early point, maybe with language like that in it, and, and we just do the best we can.
That's, that is absolutely what I think, yeah, I'm in complete agreement with that, that we, we do the best we can at this point, and, and they will, they will evolve over time and develop over time, but that's where I think this, there's, there needs to be a group of people who have their eyes on that.
Yeah, and then, however this committee is formed, or whatever it becomes, will, will unfold over time, hopefully not a whole lot of time, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But not overnight.
At least we'll have something in place, and it may evolve, but having something in place, I think, would be good.
Yeah.
Ken, would you have, in, in your mind, who on that group would, you'd pull out for the design committee? And is that something that could be worked, acted on even this week?
Why, 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 I mean, I, I think if we just use the rules and regs as an umbrella to protect ourselves until we can get the design committee put in place, I mean, even if you put them together this week, they're not going to, what are we going to get from them?
No, you're not going to, except for a commitment that they'll work on this.
They are going to continue to work on this, aren't they?
They, they weren't asked, they, they were only asked to have the one, one session.
Well, I would recommend that they be asked to continue to work on it.
Yeah, so I think the way we left it at that meeting was that, was that there needed to be some homework done on exactly the formation of that group, and who they're under, and how they're appointed, and what their, what exactly their charge is. I mean, I know what I think their charge ought to be, that it's both reviews and the design guidelines. Because I think that in applying it during the design reviews, they will see what needs to happen to the design guidelines that they're applying. So, I, I think that the two will work well hand in hand, that it would be difficult to separate those two things and have it be functional.
So you're, you're anticipating a project going to the design review committee first?
I don't, I don't know about that timing.
I could see that, like, just bogging the process right down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about that.
I, I.
Process necessarily, but I think that the, the group's charge to start with has to be the design guidelines.
Right, or the first iteration of them.
Right, and then, the, then I think we need to be thinking about whether they, maybe, maybe that's the way to approach it, is that we think about whether they participate in the design review, but I think that there's benefit from them participating in the design review, because it will inform them, as I said, about how to evolve the design guidelines.
So, a follow-up question, Mr. Chair, to Jane, through you to Mr. Buckland. Do we need an update to the use table for those uses that we want to require, require a design review? How do we, how do we dictate that it has to go to design review? Say, in the use table?
All, all uses in the use table that are under the WV1R would go through design review, because that's a standard process for every project under that zoning district. A design review doesn't apply to any other district at this time.
Correct, yeah, okay, so it's, it's, it's in the bylaw that says projects in this district go through design review.
Whatever the use is, yeah, whatever that use table.
Whatever that call, that call, yeah, so they, they have no choice, they have to go to design review, somebody has to do that. Doesn't say in the bylaw who that is, right?
No, it doesn't.
Just says, "Design review," who, whom.
Well, essentially what it is, is it's the planning board, it has to be the final arbiter of the design review.
Okay, but who, who works that with them headed, so in the concept that we were talking about for Article 15, I was proposing that we actually reside that the, write that the planning office conducts the design reviews.
Yeah, you, you could do that, you could, you could do a 53G account.
Right.
There are a couple of different ways you could do that, formally or informally.
Okay, that, that was more broadly for Article 15, and then, in the back of my mind, I was thinking a lot about solar projects and all the stuff that we go through here, that I was trying to push back into design review.
Yeah, and I don't know enough about the 53G account.
Well, that's just a funding account.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that was applied to, like, the reviews that Charlie Rowley was doing.
Correct.
Those, in my mind, were pretty much technical.
But, they're not limited, that, that's how we've used it in the past, so, I floated the idea with some members of the board of, can I, can I bring that up in what we talked about, about?
Sure.
So, I floated the idea of expanding that to include in those cases, having an attorney under a 53G account who specializes in solar or battery, or.
Or engineer.
And, and, and engineer, so I think the way the bylaw is written today and could be written in the future, that any professional advice that the board deems that it needs.
Could be funded.
Could be funded, and they could be either advising the board during the application review, site plan review, or special permit, or we could expand that concept, I hadn't thought of it, to design review. Any kind of professional support, but, but that doesn't mean we can't have community support that can, or whomsoever we say is responsible for design review.
Yeah, yeah.
So, why don't we leave it at this, to your point, Trish, you said you had a group of people that participated in that presentation, and Trish seems to think there's some candidates. Why don't you put together the list of people that you feel would be advantageous as a design review committee, and then we can discuss it at the, at the next meeting, as to who they are, what their qualifications are, what makes them. Well, at that point, we can, we can figure out whether or not they're going to be, are, are they going to be helpful to us in, in guiding us with the design review, or is it just going to, we're going to just be burning time? I mean, the, the reason that that pops into my head is the whole Deacon School thing, I mean, that, that.
Or, or the police.
Right, right.
But neither of those are in the.
That just, that just turned into a group of people who decided this was what's going to happen, and that was it, there was no real benefit that was derived from it.
Yeah, and their authority was maybe unclear to them.
Right.
Which is another thing I was thinking about, I mean, if, if these folks are. I'm sorry, their, their authority, in the examples you gave, maybe their authority was unclear, but that's why I was trying to avoid any conflict, where if we ultimately decide, or have to decide, or get to decide on the outcome from this group, they have to, I mean, I don't want to get into the, those are examples of what we want to avoid.
Right. I mean, I, I could see, I envisioned the committee working together to come up with a set of standards that they feel is in the best interest of the town, they bring it to us as suggestions, we debate, we open discussion, you know, the pros and cons of what it is that they think is, is a good idea or a bad idea, and then from that, we adopt portions or all of it, depending on what it is they bring to us. I, I don't really see the committee, as we're discussing it, being one of the processes that a developer has to get through. I, I think that all that's going to do is mire down any.
But, but the by, the bylaw as proposed says they have to get through that process.
They have to get through, they have to get through designs, but they have to be through that committee. It can be through the planning board that's using information that was derived from the committee, hence, from the community.
Oh, oh, yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying, it.
I think that's how it would have to work in terms of having authority.
Right.
Ultimately, it has to get to the planning board.
Yeah, I don't think that the.
So, the committee gathers information, comes up with a, a summary of what they feel is best, and then they bring it to us.
That's, yeah.
We adopt all or part of it, or none of it, whatever the case might be, and then we use that information.
I think that's sort of how I've imagined it, being advisory.
What, you, you described a two-part process, which I was keeping in my mind.
Yeah.
Which is, we need some people to help write some guidelines.
Yeah.
Forget projects.
Yeah.
We need some people to help write guidelines.
Yeah, normally, it's something that somebody gets paid handsomely to do.
Right, and we could, we could, we could get money from, from, from the town to have Serpent do this, but, but then, the second part of the process is, once we get a project, how do, how do we enact the design review process? And, and those are, could be two distinct decision paths.
Right.
Right, let's get some design criteria, let's get some help writing them, and then, when we get the first project, does it, does it just go through the planning office and whoever Ken wants to draw on, does it?
Well, and, and the reason I think that, that that should be the same group, doing the, helping to formulate the design guidelines and to apply them in, in an advisory capacity, is for exactly the same reasons that, the reason that I, I look at, like, this Article 6 that I, I just worked on cleaning up, because it's, it doesn't have any one person or one group that has their eyes on this document consistently.
I, I, I support that, I, I think the other thing we need to avoid is that we get a project in the WV1R, R1, 1R district, that the planning board is doing that process as part of the ongoing public hearing, and it takes us two and a half years, meeting every other week to try and get through the process, which is what some of our solar projects.
Yeah.
Is happening.
But couldn't, couldn't the, the design review be a pre-application process?
That's what I'm saying, it should be, but then, if it's a pre-application process, that's the building inspector and the planning office before it gets to us, if it's pre-application, it's not even gotten to the planning board yet for us to.
But then you'll, then you, if you're doing it that way, now you're taking, and you're putting, you're putting the design of a project into the hands and the opinions of one or two. So when it gets to us, it's, Ken loves it, it looks great, it's got, it's got that church steeple, he's all in. The rest of it might look like crap, but that, by the time we get to us, but because it has an element that he likes, it gets past that process.
It gets past the design, but it still didn't get past site plan review.
You, you, you sort of, I think, in, in the composition of the group who's doing that advisory reviewing, I think you, you aim at personnel who can sort of rise above their personal taste, I guess.
Well, that's.
And it's going to be, it is going to be very much reliant on individuals, so yes, it's, it's, it's a subjective thing to look at design.
I, I, I wrote a design review process for the four state agencies that do the affordable housing projects in the state, and in that, there's pretty much a standard process of following the criteria that you have before you, and checking it off as to whether or not you think it's compatible or not, and it's, it's, it's subjective in some ways, because you have to make that determination of compatibility, but it is still, with, with a little bit of knowledge, you can make that determination as to whether or not it is compatible with the criteria. And, and that's, that's really the basis of any decision that's made by any, any board or committee that is, that comes along, they have, they have certain criteria that they're following, and whether or not it's, it's the public amenities or, or the, the building elements, they're making a determination on each of those standards or those criteria, and, and they're, in, in some total, determining whether or not it's an appropriate design.
Well, that's where I think that the, the care in putting the design guidelines is, is so critical, because, you know, just as an example, somebody says, well, I, I hate metal roofs, don't put metal roofs down there. Well, I bet you anything, anything, that I could come up with examples of metal roofs that are really handsome, that you like, but there are lots of them out there that you don't like, and maybe the problem is the pitch, not the material. So that's where I think that there's a lot of care that has to go into having those design guidelines be generic, but at the same time, aim you to get what it is you really want, and not something else, that, oh, I didn't think it would tell them that.
Right, I'm, I'm, another question, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Buckland. If, if we were to, it's a process question, or it's actually going to ultimately sort of be legal, if we were actually to designate your office as the design review point, or pre-application review, or whatever we call it, would those reviews be subject to open meeting law?
Uh, no, they wouldn't, but your, your determination, and your acceptance of it would be.
When, when you, when you completed the.
When I handed it over to you, and.
Then it becomes open meeting law.
That's right.
If we had a committee, my word, committee, I don't know, appointed by some other group, that would be subject to open meeting law, which is a good thing in some ways, but in terms of speeding the process along, not, I'm not talking about developing the guidelines now, I'm talking about reviewing a project.
Right, right.
If, if the process for pre-application review of the procs.
Project.
Project is subject to open meeting law, not a bad thing, but it's, it will add a lot more time to that process. And, and then, I mean, the people doing that process, you have to have a chair, you have to have a clerk, you have to post agendas, you have to post minutes. And while that is good in many ways, it is not good for fast, or efficient, or, and I'm not suggesting we should ever push anything through a process that doesn't ultimately get to public review. So the question is, how to, that's a consideration, I'm not arguing for one way or the other.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the questions that was asked of me when you were interviewing me for this board was, you know, what, what about design guidelines, and, and I said, well, that's soup to nuts, you can go from one page, make it look nice, to a document that's this size, that's Nantucket, and Nantucket, it's totally onerous on the applicant and the project, the property owner. This is, you know, is not so onerous on the, so you got to, I think, figure out where you want to be. There's, there's the end result, and there's the process, and, and a longer process is probably going to get you a, a better result. Or you can shorten the process and maybe not be so happy with the results, so you got to sort of figure out where you want to, where you want to stand.
I'm only pointing, pointing out the considerations for.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure, actually, that this word may necessarily be given the choice of how to do it.
Right.
It may be prescribed by law or by another body.
Yeah, and that's where it gets totally out of my.
Yeah, yeah.
Real house.
Yeah, I mean, I'm reminded of constitutional law and learning about the obscenity guidelines, one of the justices said, I know it when I see it, and I think everybody, everybody knows bad design when they see it, but to describe what it is is.
It's hard, yeah.
I don't know, where does this leave us? I, I think one, can I summarize, Mr. Chair, where we're at at the moment? We've agreed to move forward with a public hearing on May 8th for the.
For the rules and regs?
For the design guidelines as currently exist, for rules and regs, we can hold a public hearing, we can then decide. Did we agree on that?
Yes.
We're going to move forward on the design guidelines as currently exist.
As currently exist, on May 8th, with a public hearing.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble understanding your English, the design guidelines that currently exist on May 8th, or?
That currently exist, attached, there's a set that was attached to the zoning. That currently exist, attached, there's a set that was attached to the zoning bylaw for the WVR1.
And so, you're not gonna make any changes there, or take any input on that?
At this point, there's, there's no, no body to make changes to that, that, unless, I mean, maybe the redevelopment authority wants to look at them. I, I don't know who would, who would make the changes at this point, but there are, there is a text that's put together that are some, some really, some fairly rudimentary design guidelines that were being proposed to work in conjunction with the bylaw change to add WV1R, to put this text of rules, of, of design guidelines into the rules and regulations to work in concert with the new bylaw.
And, so my thought was, let's get something down on paper, and once we have established rules and regulations, the process for modifying them...
Right, can begin.
Can begin.
So, the, the design guy, you're proposing that the design guidelines that we have written already, that need to go into the rules and regulations, we need to get that process started to get them implemented in the rules and regulations.
Okay, so you're, you're not taking any input on that anymore?
It's so vague at this point.
Right.
Just make a good building, basically.
And, so, my...
I mean, it's more than that, but...
And you don't have a sense of, of trying to do better?
At this point, we've, we've got such a short term to do that, and I, I think we, that would barely even touch the top of the iceberg to try and affect some changes to that. I mean, we can look at it, for sure, and I think that's what this public hearing, what could happen at this public hearing, what could come out, is, is comments about revisions to it. I, I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Well, and the only thing I was proposing is the first step to getting rules and regulations established, well, the first step is to have a draft, which we sort of have.
We have.
The next step is to have a public hearing to gather input, but if, there's no rush other than, if there's no, I mean, if we don't want to rush into it and we want to have somebody spend more time improving the draft text, we could go that way, too. You know, I was just trying to react to the, to the concern that said, "We need to get something in place."
And what I'm reacting to is that you had a whole group of people talking about this and giving you feedback, and I was wondering whether that group was gonna provide you any additional feedback that would result in refinement of what you have.
You can always ask.
I think that the discussion that's been had so far was sort of at this 30,000-foot elevation, and that the, to, to really start to put design guidelines together that are less, less vague than what, what is on paper now, you really gotta drill down into them, and it's, it's getting into the weeds a fair amount.
Why don't we maybe have them run through a design review process on a, a set of plans and see what, what's involved?
Yeah, if we could come up with a set of plans and just work through that as a, as an example, that might be a good idea, a good exercise.
Okay, so, just continuing the discussion as a process, a matter of process, then, the draft text has to be available when we post the public notice. The public notice has to be posted two weeks ahead of the meeting, so if...
We haven't texted.
No, but if we're gonna spend some time getting some additional input, trying to approve it, then the time that it takes to create that draft two of the text...
Yeah.
Has to get in front of the two-week notice.
Right.
So, that's just a scheduling issue, I, I'm just...
And if we're anxious to have something in place, whether or not this article passes at town meeting to change the bylaw to add WV1R, then we gotta get on it. And probably have a public hearing based on the current text, and, and immediately get to work on developing it.
Improving it, improving it, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I could go either, I, I don't, I, I was just offering a solution to that question.
Well, so, we, we could put it on the agenda for a public hearing and get a reaction to it.
So, are we gonna put it on for the 8th, is that the consensus?
I'm, I'm trying to address...
Does that make sense?
I, I think if, if you put, put it on the 8th and people bring comments forward that are helpful and maybe not, don't get you to the level that you ideally want, but are improvements.
Yeah, then we make those.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a jump-off point somewhere.
Yeah.
The 8th might as well be it.
And it doesn't mean if we open this public hearing that we necessarily have to forge ahead with implementing that text as the rules and regulations, does it? Does it mean that we have to do it?
No, it doesn't, you don't have to...
No, I mean, what, what we do with applications, the conditions evolve, we rewrite the conditions, and then we ultimately vote on a, a final product, right? So, we can improve the text as part of the public hearing process.
Yeah, and you, you can do design review in the meantime as well, too, even without having that improved.
Yeah, that can be a completely separate aside.
Separate thing, yeah. All right, so I just added it. Jonathan, did you get that?
I did.
You're a better man than I, I was lost 20 minutes ago.
Oh, well, this is just trying to understand process, I don't know that we decided anything, we're still...
This is process, too.
Okay.
I just have one more comment.
Lay it on.
Go ahead, huh?
Lay it on me.
I'll be, I'll be short.
I'll be short. So, if you are deciding to go ahead and put this group together, this group, I would just check with Mr. Bowen or Judith and Alan. I'm novice enough not to know the answer to this, is you don't want to call it a committee, because if it's a committee that applies to the planning board, you've got to have two of you in the committee, then having this group not be in the committee, they have to be an advisory team or something. So, you probably just want to come up with the right legal nomenclature to call this group, so that they can work with you, but they don't vote on you, and they don't necessarily have to report to the planning board. They might report to planning or someone else, but I would get that in place legally on what's the best thing to call this group.
Yeah, so I, I sort of feel like that's, that is, that is a piece of it, but that's a separate piece from doing the public hearing.
Right.
But I think it's one that needs to happen, and I agree that we need to figure out how this committee, what shape this committee takes.
Yeah.
Who's, who's their parent, who's, you know?
Yeah.
There was some discussion about it being two members of the planning board that form this subcommittee. I, I, I don't know if that's the appropriate thing, I mean, there's...
I think, I think you're overthinking it, I, I, I...
But I think that...
To, to me, it's, it's a citizen advisory group tasked with, with design standards. They meet, they, they, they pool their collective talent or, or experiences, and then they come before the board as, in an open meeting, as, as a group of citizens and say, "All right, you know, we put design standards on the agenda." They come before us and they present their findings as to what they feel is important.
And, and...
Then there's no, there's no legal ramifications of that.
A thought is, it would be really good to have that group at least named at the time for your public hearing, because then...
What's wrong with advisory group to design standards?
Can call it, can call it that, and just have them available to be part of that public hearing, so that whatever, whoever the citizens are who listen in or show up can see that there's an action point already taking place.
I, I think they're two separate actions, and I, I don't think they need to be joint, but I take your input.
Yeah.
I, I can, I don't...
I, I think government, town government is a lot like a company I used to work for. If there's a, any human way to make something way more complicated than it needs to be, we're gonna find it.
But, but the...
But you have to make sure what we're doing is legal.
Well, having a public hearing on rules and regulations is entirely within our...
Our purview.
Our purview, not describing how they got written, or who's gonna write them in the future, or, forming a committee is, is not something the planning board can do. If it's, Mike is proposing a, an informal...
That's fine.
Any group of citizens can get together at any time, write bylaws, write recommendations, but if we get into the position where it looks like we're appointing them, then, then...
Yeah.
That has to be more formal.
I'm, I'm all for, for simple and, but I'm also, it needs to be legal.
But, any, any group of citizens can get together at any time and...
And bring comments.
Bring comments.
Just like Trish is now.
And, and Barry brings written stuff all the time.
Right.
That's fine, too.
But we all may agree, but somebody out there may say, "They're still forming a committee. I just think we need to check Bowen to make su-" I think your idea is the perfect one, but just check to make sure that we can do this legally, 'cause somebody out there may not think we can.
Just, I don't want to get us into hot water. I don't want to see us get in hot water.
So, where does that leave us with the, the motion to hold a public hearing on May 8th?
Separate things, in my mind, it's two separate things.
But is Sam convinced they're separate things? I, I don't...
No. I just...
I'm, I'm absolutely convinced they are, but that's why I...
I agree, but I just want to make sure, as you said, we're not gonna get hot, hot water, as Trish recommended, we do it right.
I thought we were under the impression that May 8th was gonna be a public hearing to adopt the rules and regs as they're written.
That was my...
Nothing to do with the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Nothing to do with it.
That was my motion.
Right.
And the rules and regs are for this, they're the...
Planning board.
Tiny board rules and regs, so there are purview.
And this is our, this is our jump-off point.
There were, there are purview, so...
Okay, so...
Okay.
And then, in the meantime, Ken, you can ask...
No, meet with people I need to meet with, yeah.
Meet with whoever it is that you meet with, we don't need to know their names, their backgrounds, that way, we're not, we're not forming this committee.
And in no way are we trying to do anything in the dark.
No, we just want to get, we just want to get the public input on the design standards that the town feels is important and brought to us as concerns or, or suggestions that we hear in an open, open meeting.
And I want to educate people in the, in the public so they can understand and, and give me good feedback, so I can present that to the board.
Right, because education's everything. Okay.
Okay.
Are we good on that?
Do we need a motion, or are we just putting it on the agenda?
Oh, just ask Jonathan to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks, Trish.
Thank you. Thank you for the slide.
All right, time to change classes. Public hearings, we have none. Continued public hearings, we have none, this is wild. Upcoming planning board schedule, Fearing Hill, Fearing Hill is still on, is, aren't they like, come and gone?
Still in court.
So, do we have a letter from them asking for a...
Extension, no, not at this point in time.
I say, 'cause I think we've passed the last date, wasn't their request for extension up in March?
Didn't we do that already?
No, they extended beyond then.
We, we took a vote to extend it to April, not April, uh, June.
No, I think it was May.
I think it was May as well, too.
I'll go back.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it's not listed, it just, it, it's not listed as to the deadline, you know, that there's an extension.
Yeah, when they extended it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, on Fearing Hill, I don't know when they may be expecting a decision or whether it will come back to us, but I would like for us to consider when and if it does, whether there are some additional items to go into the record before we close it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
We continue it to 5/22.
5/22.
My, my discussion with you tomorrow, and we could build on that, is, we could, we could build on your statement today. I think many of the documents that we have read into the two New Leaf projects and/or the Zero Route 25 documents with, as it pertains to solar batteries and our concerns, should be read into Fearing Hill. I was gonna go further, I'm not, I wasn't ready to make the proposal, but I think, and it's again, perhaps not as urgent, because there's nothing immediately pending per feedback from Ken, we create a folder that says articles of relevance to all solar battery projects in town, and then refer any applicant to, okay, if you're gonna put a solar applicant in, this is incorporated by record or by, by whatever the right language is, but we're, we're not there yet, but we should go back and anybody who's, I, I, was on my agenda for you tomorrow, is what are the documents that should be read into all solar projects, and as we learn more, continue to feed that, even if we don't have a project before us.
All right, so, and then we've got, Zero Route 25 has a deadline, the 26th.
We have to, yeah, we have to...
So, that really needs to be on, on the agenda on the 22nd. That's our last meeting before the deadline.
Yep. Do we have any more discussion that we need to do before then? There's some, we have to get together and hear from, we had a list of questions that were supposed to go to Attorney Bowen.
We have to get to him first.
Specific to Zero Route 25 broadly for the three solar projects.
Right. Is he gonna be available this Thursday, or is he still sick?
Uh, I'm not sure he's responding, but he's not planning on showing up yet.
You're burning Thursdays.
Yeah.
Not a lot of them left between now and the 26th, and we're still gonna need...
We gotta schedule it.
Discussion. After we talk with him, we gotta have another...
Either workshop or, or open, open part, open part of one of our meetings.
All right, can you confirm if he's gonna be available this Thursday, and if not, can we...
I'll get a doctor's note from him if not.
Have, have we sent him a list of, the list of questions? We had discussed getting it in front of him ahead of time.
Yeah, he did get the list of questions.
Yeah, I say, we sent that already, so that he could prepare for the meeting. So, if we can't get to him on the 13th, then we absolutely have to have time with him on the 20th.
All right.
I mean, you know, the deadline's coming, so...
But then, if we don't get to him by, until the 20th, we have no time to react and process.
Well, we have the, we have the 24th for, for, it's an off-cycle meeting, but we could have a workshop that day.
We're, we're really shaving it thin.
It's town meeting on the 24th.
No, no, he's, you're talking 24th of May, right?
No, I was looking at April. Monday, the 1st of, of May isn't, I, I won't be here, I'm gonna be out of the country, so that's no good.
Yeah, we're, we're getting shaved thin here for legal advice.
So, he, he needs to act. If he's our town council and he's, he's on retainer, we need him to, to, to get involved.
But if the man is sick, I mean, that, that goes back to my earlier recommendation...
You know what? When the 26th comes and we, and, and it gets approved, a constructive approval, everybody's gonna be mad at us, not at him.
We have to, we have to take a vote, regardless, on whatever the date, no later than the week before that, or the meeting before that.
So, we have...
And, and then we have to, to, each of us, in our minds, when we substantiate our vote, have to say, "I'm making this vote with or without the, the feedback on the questions I had," or based on my best, my best understanding of Mass General law and the bylaws and the application today, and that's how, here were the thoughts.
Well, the deadline's the 26th.
We should plan to vote two weeks before that, or have an off-cycle meeting and vote them.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is the 15th.
Ken, you think that the, the applicant would extend the date for a decision, or can they extend the date for a decision based on the unavailability of our council?
I think they could extend, but I haven't asked them that question yet.
Well, it's probably premature to, but that's, that's something else to tuck in our pockets.
Well, I mean, can I...
I have a question about process. Is a public hearing ever reopened?
Uh, rarely.
Why would you want to do that?
Stop the clock.
Um, there are, I think there are some specific things in...
You'd have to check for a proxy.
You'd have to ask the attorney.
Yeah.
Mass General law has some...
Some processes for real.
Some language, but then, you really want, and I'm gonna rely on our attorney here, what it says in Mass General law is only one part. You need case law that helps you understand, right?
This is something that Ken probably knows more about than anyone else sitting in this room, and, but I think we would need to check out with, with Rich. I mean, I could speculate based on... I mean, I could speculate based on understanding of law, but it's, we really need to get a good solid opinion.
I don't think it's easy to reopen a public hearing.
No, I think you put...
I would guess it's not, especially if the applicant doesn't want it to be reopened.
I think we're probably putting the cart before the horse anyway. Let's check his availability for Thursday.
All right.
And then based on that, we can move forward.
Can you, perhaps, Mr. Chair, take an informal poll? Other than me, is anybody really waiting for this feedback from Attorney Bowen? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, other than me, is anyone really hanging their hat on this feedback?
I am. There's a couple of questions that I need answers from him that would help me feel good about what I'm about to decide.
Okay, great. I just didn't want to be the one obstructionist here or fly in the ointment. Fly in the ointment.
All right, so then we'll just wait to hear from you on Rich's availability for Thursday.
Please, the earlier the better on that day. If he can make it, early would be much better.
Can you send the list of questions you sent to him?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday. Let me check my calendar.
Would he Zoom or FaceTime with us, do you think?
I don't know. Haven't asked him that question before.
That's good, yeah, that's good. That would help. That way he's still maybe feeling okay, but still testing positive, then...
He won't be contagious then, that way.
Yeah, we can just Zoom with him and get our answers. Yeah, Thursday morning, I'm free right now, so that would work. Okay, so we're going to wait to hear from you.
Right.
Okay. Remember comments?
Yes, I have 44 pages I'd like to read in the record to make sure we get to nine o'clock.
I actually have a comment. The last meeting, I saw a map on Ms. McHale's phone talking about aquifer. So I went back and got ahold of her and said, where can I get that? She gave the information. Went to the EPA site concerning single-source Massachusetts. Actually, there's a committee out there, Plymouth Carver, single-source aquifer, started by Pacico and Terry Murray. We're talking about these systems failing. They don't want you to put fertilizer on your lawn. I just, I mean, I didn't print them up for everybody. Just take a look at the site, Plymouth Carver, single-source aquifer. It's incredible. Almost all of Wareham is on top of the aquifer, and it's in jeopardy right now.
It's already got problems.
Yes.
I found the report...
I didn't mean to open up new subjects. This is comments.
The SWAP reports, I forget what the acronym is. Hasn't been updated by the Water Department since 2003, but even then it had these risks.
And it's amazing that how much is covered by the town of Wareham, almost the whole town.
And I still need to apologize to Mike. I was trying to make the distinction not of a sole-source aquifer, the distinction of a single sole-source aquifer for all of Wareham, looking ahead to Fearing Hill, because Fearing Hill is not...
Agreed.
Part of that aquifer.
Right.
It's part of a different water system, and that's what I was really looking forward to. I didn't want to get to the point where we were getting Fearing Hill into this decision, even though the considerations for battery are relevant to Fearing Hill.
Fearing Hill touches another issue because it's part of the recharge area.
Yeah, just, Mike, just be careful how much we talk about this because the public hearing's still open.
I understand. Thank you. I was just apologizing to Mr. Baptiste. Any more comments?
All right, I have one comment because I want to get to nine o'clock, too. I asked Jonathan to put together a list of the up-and-running solar arrays in town with their approval date.
I have that. I've shared it before. We have the list.
With the approval date? Because I have the list from him, but it's not the approval date that's listed. It's the date that the town assessor's office adopted it.
Okay, I'm not going to, I have to go back and look. I have an Excel spreadsheet that has all the projects that were approved. I thought the approval date was on there as well as the...
Is that the number of modules and the number size in terms of...
Yeah, it's not the approval date, though.
Has the KW. You look at the Excel spreadsheet from the solar bylaw.
I'm bringing it up now.
I think it's an important document. I'll be glad to share.
I would love to see that.
Well, the reason that I bring it up is because I want to get a schedule started for the board to start reviewing these arrays when they hit the five-year mark.
So I will send everyone the Excel spreadsheet that Ken worked with the solar bylaw committee to put together. I'll make sure Jonathan has a copy if it's useful to him. What do you think? Or just forget it and let Jonathan start from scratch.
Let Jonathan use that as well, too. Maybe it'll save him some time.
Okay.
Interested to know the number of modules.
And then the question that I have for you, because I don't really know, is...
Jane, we can calculate.
There is projects on that list that have no decommissioning plans.
That's correct. There's some that were before, came in before the decommissioning requirements were in place.
At the five-year review mark, are we...
And there's some that don't have a five-year review mark either on the decommissioning.
Because there's no decommission. So Jonathan, I was going to send you...
Is that the sheet?
It looks like a version of it, yes, but we did some work.
Well, all right, well, the date that is there is the date that the town assessors started.
Well, thinks they're going to start getting, yeah, but for example, those dates...
They don't mean anything.
Right, because some of them, it can't be added to the tax rolls because they haven't been built yet.
Well, and like there's one...
Yes, that's the spreadsheet I was, a version of the spreadsheet I was talking about.
There's two or three of them there that were adopted by the assessor's office in 2021, and I'm looking at them, and I've never sat in on them, so they've been in existence for at least four or five years.
Oh, easy.
Which, for example?
99 Charge Pond Road.
They're not built yet.
Charlotte Furnace.
Charlotte Furnace is built.
Well, it says that the tax assessor adopted it in 2021.
Okay, I'm not, for example, it says the tax assessor is going to adopt 140 to Honeit in 2023.
2023.
That's still in court.
But it's not built, right?
It's still in court, which is why I sent you that.
Have any of them expired? Have any of the special permits expired that aren't built?
That was another thing I was going to be, I was going to bring up that like 140 to Honeit, the special permit is two years old, but it gets more time while it's in court. So when that thing actually starts clicking its two-year clock, it's going to be six years old before it even starts.
Right, well, I guess the reason that I brought this up is I want to get a review process in place for the projects that need to be reviewed every, I guess.
Jonathan, do you have this spreadsheet or not? I'll send it to you.
Just send it to me.
He sent it to me.
Oh, you sent it to him, so then we're all, I have a version of that spreadsheet that we did some work on a solar bylaw committee. I'll see what we add. We were like adding project numbers and...
Approval dates.
Trying to get some of that. We may not have all that. So the other thing, Jonathan, I was going to send you a note. I wanted to get copies of the certificate of approval for each of those projects because some of them are way older. They're not even on the, and then come back and start getting copies of the plans so that we can answer questions like how many modules? Did they have a battery? Things that we didn't even ask back then.
That was before we hated solar projects.
Right.
You can't say that.
And by the way, I was going to ask a question.
It's actually not true.
We don't hate solar projects now. We know a lot more.
We know a lot more, right?
One of the research items that I'm doing is the Blue Wave projects.
Yeah, those were very educational in the early stages of solar development.
Right, but I don't think they had batteries.
No, they didn't.
But at one meeting, Mr. Fletcher said he was adding batteries to one of those projects, and I want to know if that's actually true or my understanding was true, or he got a building permit.
And if that's a modification of the special permit.
Right.
Well, it would be. If the batteries weren't there when it was approved and he wants to put them there, that is a modification.
It is.
My understanding was that was the plan for some of the Blue Wave projects, and I think that was said at one of the solar bylaw study committee meetings. And at that point, we didn't, we didn't know from batteries. How would, I guess I could take a aerial view of the projects, but I don't know if I could see batteries in there or not.
We could pull out the near map and start doing a scan of the projects.
Yeah, we could do that, but that's, let's not make that our next, it's not make that our next step.
I just think we need to establish some sort of a routine oversight of all the projects in existence. Make sure that when their five-year view is up, make sure that their bonds are active, you know, all the...
Excellent. I fully support that.
Mike, is that our job or is that the building department's job now we're becoming cops?
Well, I think as far as the review and the bond, I...
The condition of the permit says the review is done by the board.
Yeah.
On the bond.
And there's not, I mean...
Because the bond, all the bond should have three parties on there. Well, two parties in the town. The town gets notified of the status of the bond.
Yeah, but...
The town had a grant about 10 years ago, longer than that, on a bond that was lapsed.
Well, that's why I brought this up.
It cost the town a lot of money to fix the project.
It might be somebody else's responsibility to make sure the bond is in place, but I would feel better if we knew firsthand that it was, you know, the old trust but verify.
Yeah, we had something, if you got ahold of the bond companies, the post office box out in Arizona. And after a year and a half, they were gone. They didn't exist anymore.
Yep, we've got that. Mr. Chair, a question on this topic through you to Ms. Quark. Sherri, is there an easy way to query the Public Utilities Commission to see if batteries were added to any of our solar projects? Is that like an easy query?
I don't think that they would know.
Wouldn't that have to be part of the interconnect agreement or revision or an update to the interconnect agreement?
I don't know that they would have the interconnect agreements. Those are often federal.
So there's no easy way to query, did somebody add a battery or does this project have a battery?
It would be under the SMART program if it was there.
Yeah, that's, that might be a way to do it, but let me think about that and see if we can...
I'm just trying to find an easy way to get the information. Or we could request a site walkthrough of every single one.
These guys are all enough, and he'll tell you.
On that note, I entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Corrick. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
I know, you want to stay.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.